We're gonna, um, yes, we will call ourselves to order and uh. Aaron can catch up. Um, so I want to welcome everybody to the September. Twenty-sixth meeting of the planning board. Um, so real quick, roll call. Um, Jim Hogan.
Yeah.
Matt Lowery.
Yeah.
Bill Spalding.
Here.
Kevin York.
Here.
And myself, Theonall, we are here. Um, and um. Uh, so the second item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. Um, but my apologies to Susan. Um. I did not review them, so.
I just sent them. That was my fault.
Oh, no, no. All right. There's no blame. Um, we will pick that up uh next week, um, next meeting. Uh, we'll do that on ten-ten. Um, and, and we don't have Aaron yet, do we? Okay. Well, we do have, um, looks like a full house, so uh we have three A and Rs before us tonight. Um. And uh, so um. Uh, give the mic uh to uh Matt and um Brian McGrail. Um, we're gonna start with Adam Street um and then. Two sixty-nine Nahat and then um our third will be the Butler's Avenue. One, so.
Mister Chair, may I proceed?
Uh, sure.
Great. Uh, thank you. Uh, for the record, uh Attorney Brian McGrail, um, uh here on behalf of the owner of uh. The properties, uh Audi Bridges, uh the properties involved are at zero Adam Street and one twenty-two Chestnut Street. John Ogan from Hayes Engineering is here with me uh tonight, and if I could share my screen. That's possible. Um, it seems to be disabled at this point.
Yeah. Let's see who's faster, me or Jim? Um.
I believe you should be able to share.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. So I thought, I think on this, it might be best to start with um kind of familiarizing the board with the property. Uh, this isn't, this is not the subject A and R plan before the board. Uh, this is an A and R plan that was approved by the board. Back in two thousand fifteen, and what it involves is you can see lot one, two, and three. That were divided up, and basically what the purpose of that was, uh, the Bridges Family Homestead is at one twenty-two Chestnut. That comprises lot one. Uh, they cut off, um, they, there was another house out back on Adam Street, which they made a lot two. And then they created a buildable lot, lot three on Adam Street. So it was a pretty uh straightforward. At that time, we, we obtained the typical lot-shaped waiver uh for lot one because it's just a, a, um, an odd geometric shape. Uh, but it's able to meet the shape with a, with a um, uh, using a inscribed within its area.
Attorney McGrail, can I ask a question? Because this is, this brings up to one of the points I had. Apologies for interrupting you.
No, please.
The lot one that was envisioned at, at this time, does that include? The land area to the plan left of Dell Avenue, and that's what's causing the irregular shape?
No, John, uh, John can address that, I think, better than me. Uh, but um, that is, that is registered land. And that's land that was acquired by the Bridgers, Bridges, um, at a later date. They bought that from Temple Emmanuel. And for purposes of the lot, uh, they're looking to keep that separate.
So the late, so the, the, the edge of lot one as currently defined on this is. Can you just maybe walk through with?
I'm gonna, John, John, are you there? Because correct me if I'm wrong. You can follow my cursor. Goes back from Chestnut, comes back here. Here. And here, and then you've got, then basically you've got. Dell Ave, which is a, which is a paper street, so it comes back this way and then goes out. Is that, is that right, John?
No, actually, it includes the piece um on the other side of Dell Ave, yeah.
This piece here, thank you. That's why I've gone.
And, and John, that, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that kind of dog leg to the left of Dell Ave, that's what's causing the non-conformity with the R requirement, correct?
Um, yeah, it may, it may include some of the, the area right near Dell Ave, too. But yeah, the, the majority of it is that, that dog leg on the other side of Dell Ave.
So the reason I wanted to start with this plan from two thousand fifteen, it kind of sets the table for what's happening today, and now I'm gonna switch plans. And we highlighted this to make it easier. Uh, Jim, this might, this shows it better. There you go. So what we've done is, uh, we're just cutting the back of lot um, lot three off, and we're incorporating that into the Bridges property. So you can see the note down below that uh the purpose of this plan is to um subdivide lot three on the two thousand fifteen plan to create. Lot three A, a buildable lot, and lot three B. Lot three B is not considered a separate buildable lot. Must be held in common ownership with the adjoining land shown as lot one, to form a building one. That's it. Really just a lot line adjustment for that lot on Adam Street.
And you're not merging lot B into lot, lot three B into lot one?
We are.
We are. Oh, sorry, I'm, I. Being dyslexic again, all right. Any, um, Matt, any questions? Um, are there, uh, Jim, uh, Bill, Kevin, any questions from the planning board?
If, if, if I may, Chairman, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, I had a couple of questions regarding, and this plan, highlighted plan really helps Attorney McGrail. Thank you for, for highlighting it. There were a couple pieces of information that I didn't see on the plans, and I'm not sure if I'm just missing them. Um, specifically, there was a request for the waiver for the R value, which I think makes a lot of sense, given the, that dog leg. I, I think it's all. Nothing is objectionable, but I did not see, what is the actual R value? Um, that is being requested to be waived. I saw there was some language as it relates to how to calculate it, but I didn't actually see. The R value of the new combined lot three B and lot one.
I defer to John on that.
Yeah, yeah, if you give me a second, I can. Calculate that for you.
Um, while you're doing that, the other question I had is, as it relates to Adam Street, um, I noticed that there's no information. I, I'm assuming Adam Street is a public street and that there's, um, but I didn't see, because lot three A. The basis of that frontage is off of Adam Street. Um, and I'm not, and just to determine that the. The validity of that way, I'm not sure if that information is available and what the width of said way would be.
So that was vetted, that, uh, Adam Street is not a public way, and that was vetted going back to the two thousand fifteen endorsement with the planning board and, and. We showed at that time that Adam Street was a, uh, way in existence at the time of the adoption of the subdivision control law, which is one of the exceptions for an A and R plan.
So it was, it was, if Adams was a public, or not publicly, a privately held way. At, in nineteen fifty, whatever the, the date is, I forget off the top of my head, but the night, that nineteen fifties date when that A and R, what, or the subdivision control law was adopted?
That's right, and that was determined by the board back in two thousand fifteen when they endorsed the plan. And we, we brought plans at that time providing evidence. I didn't see a need to do that here because it's based on a two thousand fifteen endorsement by the board.
Understood. Okay, that, that is, that's helpful. And then the, um, the last one that I had is. Uh, as it relates to. I didn't see any dimensional information regarding the existing two-story, two-and-a-half wood-story structure and any dimensional setback off of the. Lot. Specifically, I think you're, um, if you look down at the, uh, kind of on lot one on the. Side towards Chestnut Street, uh, no information regarding how close it is to the lot line.
We're not altering that. We're not, we're not, we're not affecting that. So, you know, I think those, those probably meet current requirement, but they don't have to. Uh, because this plan is not altering, it's not, it's not changing, it's not extending, it's not making any, any non-conformities to that house any worse than they are today, if they exist at all.
But it, it's still a requirement to be shown on.
Well, we're not, we're not subdividing lot one. The only, the only real subdivision is lot three.
But you're combining it with that, correct?
We're adding, we're adding three B, but we're not doing anything to lot one. And just to, um, answer your, your question, Jim, about the. Regularity factor, um, if you combine lot one and three B, uh, it comes out to zero point five four four.
Well, um. Uh, yeah, hence, hence the need for, um. The waiver, uh, the. Um, but I, I'm, I'm with Jim and Matt. I think because you are ostensibly combining lot three B into lot one, you, you do need the, the setback lines on the house.
Oh, when that requirement went into effect, I mean, they weren't on there in two thousand fifteen when we did it.
No, but lot, but lot three B wasn't part of lot one at that point.
Well, part of three came out of lot one at that point.
And the, the subdivision world, uh, the A and R regulations have been.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Been updated since then, so.
Yeah, I mean, if, 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 I think, John, if, if, if we could add those and, and just update the plan for Aaron prior to endorsement, um. If that would be acceptable to the board, I don't see that. We're not, we're not adverse to doing it. We just would rather not get delayed and, and have to come back.
And then you'll add the what, um, coefficient? Data on the plan?
We can make a note on that, Matt, sure.
Sure, okay. And, and why we're adding, just add the status of Adam Street, that, that way, you know, when this is subdivided again, but everything will be on.
What, what was it? What was the last thing, Matt? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Add the status of Adam Street, it's private way and the width, just added.
John, do you have those?
And add the setbacks. I believe you said you wanted a note on the RF and then the status Adam Street.
Yep.
That's right.
If, uh, if that, that being the case, uh, Mister Chairman, I move that we, we vote to accept the A and R plan as presented on the condition that. The plan is updated between now and the endorsement to include the R factor, the setback of the two-story wood house. And the updated information as it relates to Adam Street status as a private way and the width of it.
And just a question before we go to motion, Jim. Um, just a, um, Attorney McGrail, and maybe this is. Uh, it's a term that I'm, haven't, I'm not familiar with. How does common ownership work? Um, under the notes, under the purpose, um, one of the sentences in there has a common ownership.
Um, yeah, so basically lot three, as it stands now, is a different owner than. It's, uh, lot three is in a, is in a trust, and uh, lot one, you know, prior to this, is in a. Um, is in, uh, Mr. Bridges's, uh, individual name. So what this means is, when this is endorsed and recorded, we're gonna record a deed of lot three B into his, out of the trust into his name individually.
Okay. That's good to know. I just, I didn't want to confuse it for anything that could, um, cause issues in the future.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for explaining.
And, um. Mister Chair, just on that motion by Mister Hogan, just, um, I don't know if it will be a separate motion or to incorporate the lot waiver. Allowing the wa, lot waiver, shape waiver under one ninety thirty-one K in that motion, or if it's a separate motion.
Um, and I, I will second Jim's, uh, motion, um, as it's okay with you, Jim, as revised to also grant the, uh. The waiver.
I, I accept the friendly amendment to add the vote on waiving the, or accepting the requested waiver related to lot, the lot K value. Or R value.
Um, the requested waiver being also the, right. Got it. It's not just a waiver. Yep, yep, never mind. I got it. Sorry, I'm scribbling my notes. All right, uh, so, um, thank you, Matt, for the second, um. As amended, and all in favor, um, Bill Spalding?
Yes.
Kevin York?
Yes.
Uh, Matt Lowery?
Yes.
Jim Hogan?
Yes.
And myself, yes, all right. Five to zero as, as amended. Um, that's great. All right.
Mister Chair, Mister Chair, if I can work with, um, I don't know if Aaron, is Aaron on yet or no?
Does not, does not sound like.
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, if I, if I could work with her and you to potentially, if the board would normally authorize you to sign the application, accepting it because. And, and we've done that before with a, with a docu-sign, which is fine, um, by you, because I need to record that or file that with the town clerk. Um, that's a requirement under the statute within, within a few days after the hearing tonight. Um, so I, if it's okay with you, I'll just coordinate that with you and Aaron.
Sure, sure.
Great, thank you.
I'm in, I'm in, I'm in Wakefield on Thursday, so.
Great, I'll send a note to her, uh, in the planning board tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Do you check that email, will you? The planning board email?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Uh, our second, um, is. The two ninety-six Nahat Street. Uh, in Curtis Avenue.
Great, thank you, uh, Mister Chair. For the record, again, Attorney Brian McGrail, I'm representing, uh, the owner of the property, uh, two sixty-nine Ha, um, the Haath Street, which is Lawrence Pizzano. I think Lawrence is on here at, uh, somewhere. Gina Jones is his, uh, is his family friend. She's logged on. He perhaps is with her. But also with me tonight on, on this application, uh, is Paul Fanocchio. Um, so if I may share my screen on this.
Uh, excuse me, Mister Chair, I, we. I, I saw that we just received the, the plans, but. A short time ago, I had not had a chance to review them. So, um, I don't know. If we want to even bring this up, because. Uh, I, I'm not willing, I'm not ready to vote on this at all because I have immediate plans.
Okay.
I can tell you, Matt, um, um, the, um, the only change that we made on the plan that was submitted. Uh, a little bit ago was that we took the existing driveway off. That was it. Because that's not going to be used. That's the only change on that plan from what you had before. And if you want to go with the plan that we submitted showing that, the original one, we're fine with that. So whichever, it, it really doesn't matter to us. So we'd like to take that off, but we want to proceed. So if you want to go with the original one that we submitted, we're, we're fine doing that. Because that was the only change, and we can, we can go with either one.
Um, I, I did review the, the first one, so I'd rather go with that.
That's fine. Yep. Uh, so I'm gonna. Share that. See. There with me for a second, because I gotta find that one. Right. Bring this thing around. Okay. So this is the plan, this is the plan that was emailed to you, Matt. You saw. Um, so basically, um, this property, as I mentioned, is, is two sixty-nine Nahat Street. Uh, it's a pretty significant-sized lot. Um, it has unique shape to begin with. I'm gonna kind of walk you through the, through the, uh, exterior boundary lines of the lot. Uh, it's, it's start, starting back in the corner. Uh, it comes up, goes up to Nahat Street. It comes all the way around the corner, cuts back. And you're following me? It comes down along this way out to Farm Street, back up all the way to the corner. Uh, this way that shows on the plan is part of our lot. It's our fee, we, we own that, it's fee ownership. Uh, other people have rights to it, uh, specifically this person here. At seventy-five Farm Street has rights to use it as ways are commonly used in the town of Wakefield. They currently use that for their access. Uh, they come down and go in the back to get to the garage. We have rights in that way, too. We actually own the fee interest in, as I've mentioned. Uh, this is, this is registered land, uh, that, the rights in that way are clearly stated on the certificate of title. Um, so what we're proposing to do is to divide this in two lots. Um, and to, um, this existing driveway will no, will, will not be used to serve this property. Um, we're putting a new lot line here. Um, these are two very large lots. They easily meet the frontage requirement. Um, um, of a hundred feet, twenty-eight thousand square feet plus, uh, twenty-eight, seven forty-nine for lot one and forty-seven thousand two oh one for lot two. Uh, we've asked for a shape waiver here. It makes sense because the lots are so big. We could comply, you know, and, and I think the board knows this because it's done in the past. That lot shape, um, requirement is. Is easy to navigate because you can just cut off pieces of the lot to make them not buildable. And, and make the lots comply, but it doesn't make sense to do that because then you have, um, kind of, um. Often pieces of lot land, small lots that just kind of go into Never Never Land. So, um, so this is, again, I, I think a fairly straightforward, um, A and R plan, and we're happy to, uh, Paul is here and I'm here, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Jim.
Um, couple of questions. Everything you said makes a lot, a lot more sense and addresses some of my questions right at the back. Um, specifically related to that way that you were denoting on the plan left side of that. Is there an easement, or is there any other documentation that should be amended to this plan documenting what that, those rights are? You know, if they're not. If there's something more than just, uh, and, you know, is there an access agreement, for example, that should be denoted on this plan?
No, no, as a matter of fact, if you look at, I've, I've done, run the title, the, the certificate of title says, um, that, um. And I, and I, and I'll actually bring it up. Let me show you the language in the certificate of title. Um.
Just when I see way, I, I think, what's the rest of the information that's missing as it relates to public-private? Paper street, you know what I mean?
Yep. So let me show you, first of all, um, just so you guys see it, this, this might be helpful. For a step on this. This is the actual land court plan. Which is our lot shape, you know, the same shape as you saw the dimensions and, and, and you can see this is part of our lot. And it's labeled way on the, uh, on land court plan. So that is that. And then I've just got to grab the certificate of title, you know, one second. All dressed up the way I just had to log onto my computer at work to get it.
While you're, while you're pulling that up, uh, the other comment that I wanted to relay was similar to the last plan. Um, this plan is requesting a waiver for the R value associated with the, um, the two lots. There's that shaded plan you mentioned that demonstrates compliance with smaller lot areas. It's not exactly clear that's what the intent of it is when you're just looking at this without the background. So I'd, I'd, I'd request, you know, just between now and the endorsement. Some sort of note there, you know, saying, you know, uh, saying as such, and/or removing those two shaded areas. And just noting what the R value is of the two lots as currently proposed, um. Inclusive of the entirety of the land area. If you're gonna be getting a waiver for it anyway, I think it might be appropriate not to have that additional information that. I find confusing, frankly, going back and looking at it, but I'd also be interested in what the other board members think about that, that item as well.
Okay, here you go. On this point, uh, Jim, so this is Mister Pizzano's, uh, certificate of title. Uh, his wife has passed, so he's the sole owner. And, uh, it references the plan that I sho, showed you, and you can see at the bottom, it's right on the face, it's a certificate. So much of the above-described land is, is included within the limits of the way shown on the plan is subject to the rights in favor of John Crowley. Edox land, two and from Nahat Street in common with all other, all other persons lawfully entitled there, too. So, um, Mister Crowley owned the property at seventy-five Farm Street, and that's how he accesses, uh, his garage out back. Paul and I both ran the title. I can't see any, you know, this is registered land, so if anyone has rights in this, it needs to be listed in the, uh, certificate. Um, I don't see, you know, I've done, I've run title. I can't see anyone else that has rights in this, and not that it matters, we certainly own it, so we have rights in it.
That, that, uh, materially addresses my original question. Thank you.
And I ran the title on this, on the, on the seventy-five Nahat and confirmed that that was former, formerly owned by John Crowley. And their deed references this. It references, you know, rights to use the, the way, and it references our certificate of title, so it all ties in.
All right.
Um, I, I do agree with, with Jim that the, um. Lot coefficients of irregularity, uh, should probably be outlined on the plan itself, so you know what areas are excluded. We, um, you know, the shapes are, most of them are, maybe in a reverse order from where they. Lie and the lots, and it, it just is kind of confusing of what is included and what isn't, so. You to put the dash line around to show what's included and what's not, I think would make a lot, a lot clearer for people. Um, and then my other question is, um. accessing this lot, are you planning a shared driveway or a new driveway?
Hold on now. Let me bring up the plan again. I'm trying to do that so we can. Well, this really isn't a driveway. It's a way. So it's like as such, so you know, we're gonna, I think the way we're gonna access this lot is gonna be via the way.
Excuse me, we're looking at the wrong plan because we were we were going with the other plan.
Sorry, Matt.
The only one I've reviewed, so.
You got it. Apologies.
But Attorney McGrath, my understanding is that you're claiming access for the A and R statute via the access onto Nahon Street via the two hundred and eighty-five feet of frontage along that area. Access via the way is not the the manner of establishing your required frontage, correct?
No, we well, we can do it either way, and we can access via the frontage on the Han Street. Or we can decide we want to access off the Palm Street. There's nothing in our zoning bylaw that requires that you have to access via your frontage. I've dealt with this before. Some towns have that requirement. The town of Wakefield does not have that requirement. That was something that the town contemplated back in the early two thousands. They contemplated changing the bylaw to require that, and it it never happened. So if you look at Linfield, for example, their bylaw says that you have to have legal and actual access over your frontage. Wakefield doesn't have that. And this point is examples of of lots in Wakefield that have gotten A and R approval with access via other other ways in or back or but not over the frontage.
So the so the argument is that your access via Farm Street addresses the the access requirement for an A and R statute. And then the frontage along the hot separately addresses that requirement, and they don't necessarily have to tie together.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to commit either way how we're gonna access this, but I I think the practical way to probably access it, Jim, is gonna be via the way. It's gonna be a safer way to access. I think when we when we deal with you know, with with, you know, I don't think that the I don't think that the Public Works is gonna really be excited about a curb cut on that corner on the hunt. And I think it's it's gonna be much more practical and safer to access on Farm Street. There's no prohibition from doing that. And then that existing driveway will be used for the new lot. It just won't go over to serve the other lot.
Okay, so you're not gonna have a shared shared driveway and you do not expect to go onto Nahon Street because we're gonna terrain there. You've got a lot of ledge there. It's
Yeah.
It's pretty steep. So that was my question is how are you gonna access this?
Yep.
That is what you're gonna do. You're gonna turn up. Okay.
That's what we're gonna do. I mean, we could, we could, you know, we, you know, we would need some special permits and probably a variance for the for the for the for the common driveway. If we wanted to, we could come back and do that, but we don't see a need for that here because we have access over that way.
Attorney McGrath, I also had concerns about curb cuts, so thanks for answering that part. Is there any issues with the way and the width and any emergency access?
Twenty feet wide. I mean, you know, it's 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 so, you know, it's I don't see any issues with that. We're gonna have to pave a little bit of it. It's already it's already paved significantly because this person uses it to get in to their their garage, which is in the back of their lots, and we're just gonna, we're just gonna go right through. And the topography back here is, Paul, you know, we blocked it. It's very easy to get back here, and it's it's very flat back there. It's gonna work out nice. I think the way the way you know, like I said, especially with with, you know, there's some stuff that's gonna be happening here roundabout. They're talking about that, you know, I think to try to to try to access in this frontage would not be preferable from from the town perspective, so I think we're fortunate to have this.
So for proposed lot two that currently has the home, since they're losing that existing driveway, will they access theirs through the way as well?
So lot one is gonna be is gonna come off of this driveway. So lot one's curb cut will remain where it is.
Okay, it's lot two that makes us back there.
Yeah, it's lot two. The numbers are small, but lot two will access through here.
It looks like eighty-one Farm also uses that way for access?
Yeah, I don't know. That's a good point. I can't find that they have any rights to do it. It might have been a, you know, a cooperative thing that they did. But I think eighty-one also has another another driveway on the other side, but you know, I mean, that's up to my client if he wants to allow them to continue to do that, the you know. You know, I think they're probably a friendly neighborhood thing, so I, you know, I it can handle it. It's not an issue. But they do use it.
Just to I'm looking at the Google map off of Farm Street. It eighty-one has like a drive on if you're looking from from farm at eighty-one, it looks like it goes in from the left and has like a little turnaround.
Yep.
Right, separate from the way entrance.
I'm gonna show you. Hold on a second.
Okay.
This might help. I'll just bring up the Google Earth for everybody.
I actually like that little driveway on the left side. I was checking it out. It's like it goes in and creates like a nice little circle. That would be excellent to have.
So what you're talking about is, so this is this is the this is the ax. Can you see the screen?
Yep.
Great. So this is this is the right of way. That goes right up into our property. And then this is the this is the so seventy-five is one on the certificate of title. That's the Crowley property. You can see the Crowley garage comes off of that. And like I have mentioned, way in the back corner. And then eighty-one's also using this. I didn't, you know, I did a I did a peripheral search. I I looked at our certificate of title. It does not reference any rights for eighty-one to be using that. I did a search of the of the of their property. I couldn't find anything on it. I, you know, I can't speak for my client, but I and I think, as you said, Mr. Spalding, they they have a driveway on this side. For eighty-one. I don't you know, I can't speak for my client, but I don't think there's really gonna be an issue. I don't think he has an issue with this here. I mean, you know, he hasn't. He hasn't had an issue for it for they've owned the property for for decades, and and I think they're pretty friendly with these folks, so. I my assumption would be it's just gonna stay the way it is.
So and just just for orientation. The White House on the right is lot two.
No. Lot two is where the swimming pool is.
Oh.
What? This isn't. This is another house on the corner. So, you know, these there you go. So that that's the house on lot two, Mr. Chair here.
Okay.
Lot one, lot one is over here.
So all right, now I'm confused. How does how does using the way get to lot two?
It it comes, it comes comes right through here and goes right up into the back of the house.
Okay.
And it's all flat.
So they would they would have to pave an entire driveway?
Pretty much. Good portion of it up there is paved, and then they'll just make some, they'll do some additional pavement to get, yeah, and then they'll have to pave their backyard depending on you know, maybe they'll put a detached garage back here. I don't know. There's a built-in pool back there, too.
Okay.
We go back to the point.
All right, so there's consideration of a shape waiver. Doesn't sound like there's any additional notation to be made regarding the way. And
What if if Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt, but I just got a clarification from Jim and Matt. What you want on this waiver issue, so Paul and I can make sure that we understand. You don't like these shapes the way they're shown here. Is that correct?
I'd advocate that the shapes are omitted from the plan in entirety. And that we just include the R values of the lots
Yeah.
as proposed inclusive of the the you know, the the abnormal shapes of them, where if we're gonna be granting a waiver from section one ninety thirty-one K. I don't know if the the shapes are are useful, don't get me wrong, for our purposes of determining the validity of it, but from a going back and looking at this in ten years perspective, I just foresee confusion if we keep them.
Yeah. Okay, so you so you, I mean, I think what you're saying by showing you this plan the way it is. You're we proved to you we can do it, but there's no need to keep it on the plan.
That would be my position. I I I'd be interested in understanding if Mr. Lowry agrees.
I I would probably lean towards the example of a plan who just endorse or tentatively endorse from Hayes and Ben Aaron. Follow that and show the dash line of what's included with a lot of regularity right in the lot itself. It makes it pretty clear what portion of the lot being used. I just follow that.
I'm gonna bring that plan up, Matt, so you can kind of show what we what you're talking about.
Yeah.
That might and Jim can see it and Paul can see it. I think what you're saying, Matt, is what Hayes did is they kind of did arrows to show what they use to get to the regularity within the lot.
Correct. They have a dash line of what what portion of it is being included in that, so.
You okay with that, Paul? Do you understand? You're on mute.
I just don't see really on his drawing where he's coming up with an R value that's under the requirement.
What he did is, Paul, he he cut the whole lot. You see this? He says line used for lot one regu- regularity in the area. Twenty-five.
Okay, I see it. Yep.
And he's got arrows going to the all different, you know, where he's using it.
Okay, I can see it now. It's just a little small.
Okay. Do you you're okay with that, Paul, to be able to do that?
That's fine.
Okay.
Matt, did you have any other comments or anyone else from the board?
Well. I'm not a big fan of tentatively approving plans and then having them edited after the fact, but I guess I'm I'm okay with with it in this sense, but really, we should either be approving endorsing these plans or not, rejecting them, not editing them and having them come back to us at a later date, so I'm a little uncomfortable with that because that's really out of the scope of what we should be doing with these. We should either be you know, endorsing them or not. So these are minor, but I I think we're going down a slippery slope with having substandard plans presented to the board and then us approving them upon, you know, with conditions that they be updated. There's really no provision for us to add any conditions on plans that they be updated, so technically they don't need to do anything and they could be, you know, we're basically endorsing, you know, we're tentatively endorsing them in this world of virtual meetings. We think we're we're not signing it instantly like we used to do, so again, I'm just a little uncomfortable with that. I think we should not go down this road much longer.
Thanks, Matt. I partially agree. I know another side of this is receiving the drawings, revised drawings a little later, although there's small changes. I know I didn't get a chance to review these yesterday. Mondays are just crazy for me. So receiving them on Mondays was also difficult. I didn't get a chance to look back on the titles and all the stuff that I usually do. But understanding this piece of property and where it is and how difficult this land is with the ledge and the access through the way. I'm okay with how the plans are broken out. I do like to see them dashed in similar to Zero Adams, but do we want to? And I guess this is a question for the chair and the board members. Why can't we sign these? Like, why can't we all get a look at them and they just get handed off like we've done with plans in the past? So we do get a look at the actual plans we're endorsing before we do sign them.
I don't I don't think there's any obstacle to it or any any reason not to, other than just time and efficiency.
Well, I mean, it's we've done it before where they're dropped off at my house. I bring in the gym, Jim goes to Matt's and so on, or however we do it. I also have one other question to Attorney McGrath. I didn't see a Form A for this. Is that something that you've submitted?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, my camera's not working. It should have been in the packet that I sent over.
All right, sorry. Okay.
I'll double check that I sent it to you, but it was there as well as the check. Yep.
Okay, I it just on my behalf, the first thing I look at is Form A, so I really get my mind in a place where I understand what's happening before I look at the plan. But this is good. I I'm fine with the plan and how it's set up now with the addition of the dash lines showing the lots.
Well, I do have one more question. This is this is not gonna be recorded the registry. It's going to Land Court. Is this the plan that's that's gonna be submitted to Land Court for the actual decree plan? Or is there gonna be an additional plan down?
There's an additional plan down, which is the worksheet that is going into Land Court.
I assume on the additional worksheet, there's additional monumentation on that, correct? Because I was looking at it and I don't see much of the original monumentation. And that's gonna be a requirement for Land Court.
Actually, there are several bounds that on the property itself that's on the plan. There's one two, three. Along the right side property line up at the angle points and up in the back triangle, there's points there. And over by the over by the poolhouse and the cadaneth is bounds there. Those are the original bounds found. Land Court may tell me to set something somewhere. Don't know yet.
You know how that works, Matt.
I do, yeah.
I'm 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 the lucky one to usually get the registered land and outlands. I know I know those guys on a first name basis, and they and they tend to drive the bus.
Yeah.
What do they generally add to the the worksheet then? What do they require?
Well, we're showing on the monumentation, the traverse tying in to other control. The bounds where they are, if they're not exactly on the right on the lock on, they'll have dimensions to it, depending on which ones we hold. They'll tell me to do additional work if they're not happy with what's out there, so abutting the property to the northwest is another land court. And also off to the
Right here.
Yes. On all those butters along the top, that's registered land, another court case, and also I think it's patridge off to our right. And also I think it's cartridge off to our right portion of that is also land court.
But Paul, we usually start with submitting our A and O plan in your worksheets and then we go from there with the.
Correct. Correct. I get the A and O plan done. Get the math, math done, then submit that into land court for their review and set up a meeting.
So again, normally, so like these, these three bounds that are by the cabana, they're all held exactly in the position that, that there's no ops on at all?
There's some, it all depends on which math they're trying to use. And I have to set up and talk with land court to get which bounds I'm going to hold, which fit better than the others. Because they're not all exact. Some of them run through a retaining wall. Some of them right up against a fence post. I have to deal with land court saying under the original title, which bounds are good. They're showing there's all being good. And even on the, um, surveyor's plan, the original. So that would be on the worksheet. Showing so much far off and so forth for the, um, surveyor's plan. Then the land could draw up the decree.
So, so I, I'm not terribly familiar with land court to be entirely transparent. Um, but what I'm hearing is this is sort of a normal process is that, um, to come to us to, to seek approval, um, and then to do this fine tuning for the, the land court as opposed to the reverse. Making sure you've got everything buttoned up for this plan. So it's identical to what goes to land court. Is that? Matt, Bill?
Well. I, I, I guess normally when I do mine, they're a little bit more refined in what's going in the land court. I would show all the displacements, the boundaries, what's held, um, and all my, you know, everything I'm going to use. So my, my plan that I would submit is basically land court ready decides how to show the traverse on, but maybe I'm doing too much.
Okay.
Basically what land court does, Mr. Chair, they prepare their own plan for recording in the registered land side. So normally like when you endorse this plan on the recorded side at the registry, this is the plan that gets recorded. And registered land, they take this plan, they make Paul make some, you know, calculations, they might tweak it millimeters, inches. And, and then they create their own plan that gets recorded. So, you know, what they'll do is, um, they will, it will end up being something like.
Like what you showed us for.
Yeah, I'm going to bring it up. It will be this and instead of the A plan, it's now going to be the B plan. So we'll have that same number, two, four, three, four, six, B. And what they'll do is they'll cut the lot in half. And they'll give them new numbers. They designate the lot numbers, what they want them to be. And then, you know, and they might, and, and then this is the plan that gets recorded. So with registered land, your endorsement's not even shown on the plan that gets recorded. That just, they give that back to me. They don't, you know, they, they, they just say, here you go. We don't, we don't use it. We draw our own. They have, they have their own engineering department.
Of course. All right.
It's a, it's a, it's a time, time costly. It's a lot of back and forth weight. You know, process, but my experience having done a lot of these, if they make any changes, they're de minimis. It's not like they're going to take thirty feet off of the frontage. You know, they get, they, they might tweak it, you know, just a little bit of a jog or something like that. But, you know, the last two I've done, they've done nothing. They've just taken it.
Right. Okay. The, so, uh, to go back, um, the, the, the edits to the plan that, that is presented to us is to remove those two shaded shapes. It's to add, um, the calculated R coefficients. Um, and it will be to, uh, annotate the plan a little bit more, um, uh, sort of clarifying, uh, the, how, how the, the R, the R coefficients are being calculated for lot two, right?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking aloud and Matt, you know, I, you know, defer to you with your expertise. By putting those inscriptions on a plan that's going to go to land court, is that going to like give them a real brain cramp on saying, what's this all about?
Sure. They, they understand that you need to, you need to do to get this endorsed by the local authority. So.
Okay. So you don't think it'll matter to them? They'll just, you know, from their perspective, they'll see it, but they won't. They'll just ignore it.
Exactly. They'll just ignore it. They, they.
Okay.
They're just looking at the math.
That's fine.
Any other questions or observations? Um, uh, about.
I do have the, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, I just curious and I might've missed this as I was zooming around and looking at the plan and stuff. Um, and I don't see Mr. Crowley on the call. Um, just as in a butter with all this is, is, is there somebody from John Crowley on the call, on the, on the meeting?
No, I mean, nobody, this is an A and O plan, so there's no notice. And, uh, you know, and we're not doing anything with Mr. Crowley's land. We own that land. So, you know.
Understood, understood Attorney McGrail, but as this is the way that goes right by, um, their property through and garage and everything else, and there'll be trucks going in for paving or whatever might happen in the future. Um, I, I just was wondering if there was somebody from the Crowley family or representative on the call on, in the meeting.
Well, what's going to happen is before anything's done, there's going to be, you know, you know, we're certainly going to let them know what's happening.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and coordinate to, um, not, um, you know, um, not disrupt as much as possible.
Yeah. And I understand the process from here forward. I was just wondering if there was anybody on the call. Um, there's a bunch of list of names that, from that family or representation.
I don't think so. And to their defense, they won't even know this is happening tonight.
Okay.
So.
Well, um, to, uh, one thing that I would have preferred to see now, now that we know how you're getting your access, because this was one of the questions I had is how are you getting onto this lot with driveway? Now that we understand that you're going to come down that way, it would almost make more sense to look at the pavement over there to see if that actually falls on your lot. Or if it leads over on the other people's lots. So, um, in our rules and regulations, it actually shows to demonstrate, you know, your access completely. So. It almost like, seems like you need to show that driveway over there also.
Well, I mean, you know, if, if, if the driveway, well, it's a way, but it's paved. And the only rights that we have is to stay on our, on our, on our portion of it. So, you know, if, if these folks have paved part of it over here, you know, we have a right to improve it twenty feet wide within our, within our lot. I think, I think from looking at it, if you look at, you know, I've done the, I've done the, um, the title on this, if you, it, it, it clearly, our lot, our way abuts this property at eighty one. And, you know, you can see that that's where the pavement is. It's right up to the lot. If it goes over a little bit, we can't drive there. Um, but I, I don't, it, it's clearly in that vicinity. I don't see what that's going to prove or how, what, why that's going to be relevant, to be honest with you.
Well, you showed the existing driveway getting up to the house and I understand you tried to not show that on the second plan, but that that's the plan that I was waiting to review. And that's was my question is, are you going to use that or are you going to come off of Nahon Street? There's no on the ledge and the terrain there. That would be very difficult. But since you knew you were going to come up with the way, um, I would think you'd want to make sure that that pavement actually is in that way. So.
Oh, yeah. I mean, yeah, we're going to have.
Be my question. So.
Yeah.
That's literally something I would have done if, if, if I was in this situation. So, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there that, you know, if you're going back and revising plans that we may or may not, you know, tentatively endorse tonight, why not put that on?
Put what on, Matt? I'm sorry.
Where the, where the driveway is, where you are intending to have access to the lot.
I, 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 I'm a little bit confused on what you're, what you're looking for. I mean, we're showing the way that we have access to go up. Yeah. You want us to commit on the plan that that's the way that we're going? I mean, I don't.
I, I guess my point is if, if, if you're showing the existing driveway that's on the lot now, there's another existing driveway on the lot that you're not showing.
Yeah.
All right.
So why don't we just take that existing driveway off on the, if we're going to revise these plans anyways, just take it off?
Well, the driveway's staying on because this is the plan we're looking at. Again, this is, all right, if, if we're going to, again, this is why, um, either the plans, they come, either comply or they don't. Because we're into this changing things around in order to get approval. So.
I mean, to get, to just, to get, to get to the basics for, for, to have it, you know, we, with all due respect, we don't have to show anything. We've got two lots. They meet the frontage requirement and we have, we have access. So that's all we need to show to, to warrant an A and R endorsement of the plan. And the fact that we're showing that there's an existing driveway on the ground, it's there. We, we don't, we, 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 we meet the requirement. We've got access to both lots. And, and that's it. If, if somebody decides that they don't want to use that way and they want to do something else, you know, they would have to meet the town rules and regulations, whatever they offer curb cuts to do whatever they want to do. But, but, uh, you know, I don't think it's even appropriate for us to have to commit how we're going to access that as long as we clearly have a way in, which we do. We'll do whatever you want, but, uh, you know, I think it's, uh, the way it's presented, you know, we're happy to put the inscriptions inside, but I think it's, it's, it, it's fine the way it is. But we're here to, we're here to cooperate. So we're, we're listening if there's a request.
No, there's no request.
Um, it is a little hard to conceive of, uh, uh, the, using the farm street to get all the, you know, straight to the house, um, other than having a, a detached garage as you, as you discussed, um, or just, you know, a parking space. So.
It, it does make sure you're not going to have any trick or treaters. That's for sure.
I'm sorry.
You're not going to everyone come trick or treating at the front door.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Well, it's going to be nice and private. That's another way to look at it.
Well, um.
I mean, the lots part, you know, I don't think they get a lot of trick or treaters now, to be honest with you, um, the way it's, the way it is. So. I mean, you have to remember too, like the existing driveway, the way it shows, you know, these lots, the A and R endorsement basically says that we, we need the frontage requirements. There, there's a provision in here that says you're making no determination for zoning. So if we wanted to use a common driveway like that, we, we would, there'd be some zoning issues with that. You know, the building inspector would have issue with that when we went to get a building permit for lot one. So that's all stuff that we're going to have to navigate as we go. Like I said, we might decide to do that. And if we need relief from your board separately, relief from an A and R plan, we might be back to do that or go to the zoning board to do it. Um, that might be more practical, but I don't think it's a decision that we have to make at this point.
All right. Uh, I, I think that, uh, yeah, um, I, I can accept that, that argument, um, uh, for, uh, the existing house on lot two. Um, but back, uh, so we know that there are three proposed, uh, amendments to the plan that, um, would need to be made sort of so that any, any, uh, approval would, you know, like, like with Adams be conditional, um, the, for the, for the board.
I'm sorry. Just a, if, uh, Mr. Shannon, we're, we're not approving the plan um, in order for us to endorse it, they need to make some corrections to the plan.
Right.
Get away from, you know, saying approval on this.
Pardon me. Thank you. Um, so, um, the, um, for, uh, in terms of our endorsements, um, you know, if we, if we wanted all five of us to, to review and sign it, that would be one way for us, uh, just internally to be confirming that the, the three edits are made, um, uh, or, uh, rely, um, uh, we'd, um, or just relying, uh, on me and, and Aaron, um, as, as we're doing with, with the Adam Street. Is there, uh, any, any strong opinion from the, the rest of the board?
I, I think on Adam's sheet, we're all going to endorse the plan. I don't think we said that you're going to be endorsing. So, so.
Yeah, everyone should have a chance to see the plan. Just sign off on it. I don't think you're going to just be signing off. You're not going to be signing off for everyone, Theo. So everyone will be able to chance to see. And I'm sorry, I had a prior commitment. I couldn't miss, but, um, for the first one and this one, um, everyone will be able to review the plan of what it looks like to make sure it matches up with what we discussed here.
Yeah. What, what, what I anticipate or what I would respectfully suggest, and I think we've done it before, that we'll, we'll, we'll produce a new plan and send it in PDF format, Aaron, to you, that you can send to the board members to make sure everybody's okay. They can correspond individually back to you. And then if, if we need to make further changes, we can. Once everybody says they're set, then we go to print with the My Law and search.
Yes.
Signature.
And make sure it lines up with, uh, with what you've sent us in the PDF. Correct?
Yes. Yeah.
And if there are any, any things that don't line up, then you would, you'd have to come back to the.
Well, if they, if they don't line up, if they don't line up, we would do another PDF to correct that until we get it right and everybody's satisfied.
Yeah, Theo, they wouldn't have to come back.
Okay. All right. That's what I was asking. All right.
As many times as we need to to satisfy everybody to make sure we, we've got it right.
Okay.
But I thought the only change we had to this one, correct me if I'm wrong, is to, is to get rid of those things on the right and to put them within the lot. The way they did on Adam Street. Is that, is that the only change on this plan?
Well, you, um, if you remove those shaded areas, you, you do need to, uh, annotate the plan with the, the coefficient.
Yeah, we're going to put that within the lots with the arrows and.
Right, right.
With dash lines. Yep.
Yeah. So, um, I had written those as three separate things. So.
Yeah, I guess so.
Mr. Sheriff, am I?
Yeah, Bill. Uh, sorry, Jim.
Uh, motion two sixty nine Nahon and our plan and grant the requested waiver to section one ninety thirty one K with the following updates to the plans prior to the My Law endorsement. Include the lot values. One and two are value on the plan. Add a line indicating the lot regularity line that was utilized. And omit the shaded area, shaded lot areas denoted on said plan.
All right. Um, I appreciate the motion. Is there any second?
I'll second it.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Alright, thank you, Matt. Alright, um. Uh, any discussion um, or we we will vote um. All in favor, um, Kevin?
Yes.
Alright, uh, Bill?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes, alright. Very good.
Thank you.
No, uh, appreciated, um, alright.
Thank you all board members for working through this. I know it's a little bit unique and appreciate your patience. And efforts, thank you.
Terrific, uh, and the our third A and R is uh. The Butler Avenue.
Thankfully, probably the simplest. Uh. So um, this is, let me. Uh. Yeah, hang on a second, I gotta find this.
Yeah, so uh, similarly, we um.
Yeah.
We received uh. Uh, an update this uh, this evening, so we're going to go back to the the prior one.
It's up to you, I'm gonna, the only update on this was that we put we we. We put the new lot, we put a note, new lot line, so if you if you, you know, I think you want that, if you if you want to detain that, I can show you where that. Little note was put on the plan.
Mm-hmm.
It it just think will be more efficient and it complies with what you look for. Uh, if that's if that's okay with the board.
Sure.
I haven't, again, I haven't even, I saw it came in, I didn't even look at it. The previous one was unsigned and were few things are missing from it, so. Um. In this case, I would say you shouldn't even. Even look at this because it was it was incomplete submission to the board.
Well, that's not true, Matt. Um, it was submitted, the signed plans were submitted through your. Through um, through Erin.
I have, yeah, I have the hard copy.
So they're endorsed.
Signature.
And in their in their stamped. Uh, and your your regulations don't require a PDF to be sent. I do that as as a.
Actually, they do.
Well, I don't know about that, but.
Well, they do, I know because I I wrote it, so um. So.
I mean, to hold it up.
I haven't, I I have not seen the plan, so. Until this point. The plan that I did look at, again, was unsigned. And there was Ivan's missing from it.
It was, I think there was one, there was one item missing from it, which. Which was a note on the new new lot line to label the new lot line, which hasn't changed.
And I have no current intention of what was happening with the plan, that wasn't included either.
Well, I think that I think the plan, it's a it's a two lot A and R plan, I think it's pretty evident of what's happening. Um, I mean, you know, you know, uh, you know.
Again, we, you know.
I mean.
We've written, we've written rules and regulations, so we know. Exactly what should be coming, and the reason why we've done it is because. You keep getting plans that did not include the proper information. So we basically wrote out exactly what needs to be done.
Well, okay, I mean, with all due respect, I think the the some in a reading of the rules and regulations are somewhat confusing because there seems to be a common theme. That no matter what engineer draws the plans is always an issue. Um, you you know, so you know, we we try to meet them the best we can. And when it's pointed out that something's missing, when it's a de minimis thing that's missing, a note, not a change of a line, not a not a bearing. You know, a note, and you know, so tonight you have two property owners, you have heritage builders and Mary De Maria. Who are a property owners, they'd like to move on with their business. If you want to continue it for two weeks, we'll we'll make the change. Um, I just don't see the benefit of doing that for such a simple, simple A and R plan, but that's the board's discretion.
Attorney McGrail, I, we have a simple checklist. It just, it's, we put it together to make it easier for approval, so we can review it. As you know, we usually have a short amount of time. I'm not sure when these plans were issued. But we've asked for them to be, I think, a week before our meeting. And I know I received them yesterday.
This falls on me, so I'll let.
Sorry, okay. This so this. Came in and the revisions came in at like, what, five o'clock today? So, I'm sorry, Aaron, I just aside, it's. It, I don't want this meeting to become like back and forth, but we put this list together to make it easier to actually get these plans endorsed. We made it so easy that we just did a checklist right down. Just put the information on the plan, it's that simple. I don't understand why there's any discrepancy or and why we receive any plan that doesn't have all the information on it. It's that simple. I mean, engineer, whatever, it's really easy to follow a checklist. Yeah, I'm frustrated because this just wastes time, our time, your time, your client's time. It's just a checklist, easy to follow.
Yeah, and I'm I'm not gonna um. Uh. I don't, the the process needs to, uh, Aaron, uh, allow you um, time to.
No, no, I will take the blame. Attorney McGrail did give these to me, um, so I will take full blame for this evening. Um, from my understanding too, in the past, and maybe I'm mistaken, these plans would be received by the planning board. At the meeting, maybe I'm wrong, but um, in the past, um, but I'm not comparing um. And so I've heard from this board too that you don't want to see hard copies, but I should have gotten you the PDF prior um. But I was hoping that. Everything would be addressed on the plan that we're looking at tonight. So I can take responsibility for that.
Previously, we would previously, we would get hard copies. Usually. A week before. Of the actual plan, the sign one that we've seen at the meeting, so we could go through it. At the meeting. Um, we would, at that point, review it, we'd have a little. Discussion like whoever was presenting it, and we would sign it then, and they would walk away, and you would be done. And that would be it. Make things easier during, and even before the pandemic, we said, we'd rather have PDFs. So, and then we came to this pandemic, and it just so happened that we already had things written. That this is what we're expecting. So um, we've had these for a while. We have these. So not only make it easier for the board. Who's donating their time to do this, but also whoever's coming before the board. They know exactly what they need to do, it's all done, and this is an easy process. But yet, here we are again, still going.
Well, I can tell you just, you know, um. I have to tell you, because you you, there is no checklist for A and R plans, this is your checklist for A and R plans from your website. Doesn't tell you everything that it needs to be, the rules and regulations do, but there's not a checklist to just go down and say, I get everything. The only thing that. Is on the checklist is seven prints, the fee, the notification of the town clerk, and that that endorsement. That's it. For form A, that's your checklist. Your checklist for the definitive plan is more is more detailed. But just to, you know. To defend my engineer, there is no checklist. For an A and R plan. We do meet, we we try to meet the requirements. Again, you know, it's 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 in, you know, and as Aaron said. I did submit plans a while ago. We're here to cooperate. I I honestly think that this is a about the simplest A and R plan you could ever look at. Um, so it's up to you. Want us to come back in two weeks? We'll do it.
Was was the plan that was submitted? To Aaron, was it signed a week ago?
Yes.
A hard copy I have is is signed, the PDF I received was not signed till I got it uh, today.
So, the. The plan that was submitted, it it wasn't a scan of that plan, it was a different PDF, is that what you're saying?
What happened, Matt, is Paul sent me, Pete sent me the A and R plan before he went before he went to print, before he went to print. And that's what I had on my email. So when, so then Paul hand delivered to me the signed plans, I said that that's fine, print it. He he did, and I delivered those signed plans to Aaron. When I forwarded to you, I didn't realize it was the earlier version that he had sent me, which is the same plan. Of what was submitted. And the only change that was made tonight was that um. It, you know, Paul on the plan put old lot line, he didn't put new lot line, so he just put a label on the on the on the plan to show new lot line. So no dimension was changed on that plan. From what was what was submitted.
Well, I I would still feel more comfortable to actually review the plan ahead of time. The the completed plan, so. Um, I'm I'm saying that this needs to come out in our future meeting.
Alright. Alright. Uh.
But I'm only, I'm only one person, so.
Yeah.
Don't let me dictate everything now.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Well, um. The uh. Bill, Kevin, Jim?
I mean, did anyone else have a chance to review it?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, from my perspective.
Mm-hmm.
I understand this uh. Member Lowry's concerns uh. With regards to my review, I was able to complete my review and I only had one. De minimis comment as it relates to the inclusion of a note regarding the explicit. Purpose of said plan, uh, but otherwise, my, I was able to complete my review and am satisfied.
Mm-hmm. Alright. Yeah, I um. I was able to review, but not um, as, you know. Uh, extensively as I would have would have cared to um. But satisfactory manner um. Um. Bill and Kevin, um, uh, I'm. Uh, I'm sort of getting the vibe that that we should uh, come back to this at the next meeting.
Well, um, if I could speak, I don't mind. Endorsing this plan, reviewing it, it is, as Attorney McGrail said, it is the simplest plan. That we're reviewing. I did have time to review this uh, before the meeting this evening. And this was the easiest one to look at, and then Adams, and then the Nahon Farm one. Um, and Attorney McGrail. Under section three twenty dash four, plan which does not require approval. Section two, it lists A, B, C, D, E, F, G, I'm not going to go through the alphabet. Of what exactly we want on that A and R plan. So yes, what you brought up didn't show a checklist. But again, section three twenty dash four, section two does have. Exactly what we want on that plan, and I believe you're familiar with that.
And you're right. It it, no, I mean, you're a hundred percent right, Mrs. Pauling, um, you know, if. If if there's something that's not supposed to be on the, it's not on the plan. It's clear in your rules and regulations what should be, so it's, we we take responsibility for that.
Yeah, but you brought up a checklist, it's like, this is not a checklist, and you know there is one, and I'm surprised you brought that up as reference, I was frustrated with.
It's not a checklist, it's it's in your rules and regulations what needs to be included, so, you know, but. But you know, so it's our responsibility, so you know, I. It's it's, we we, I'm not saying it's the planning board's fault that the that there's a deficiency on the plan, or there was.
Right, and you've been doing this long enough to understand that the process has evolved. And what we have now here is something that is more helpful to all of us. And I just don't want to spend any more time back and forth about what needs to be on a plan, because it seems like we go over it each time one comes up. And it's really just all listed, it. I don't know how it could be easier, so. I I just like to think um. That these meetings can go a little bit easier just by following what we have already set up.
Wait, well taken.
Alright. Um. Uh, we do have the property owners on the.
Yes, I am here.
And. And Mrs. Di Maria is still here.
She is, yes.
Alright. Um. I think it uh, it behooves us to review the plan. So, and to do it um. Uh, yeah, so. Uh, Brian, uh. You want to bring up the the one that was that we received a week ago and uh. Uh. Within within uh, the understanding that the that this has been signed.
Yeah, what I'm actually going to bring up if I can, and 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 um.
I'm looking at.
This is the plan that you received a week ago, okay, and Paul. Pardon if I'm wrong, this is a correct statement, right? And the and the only change that Paul put on. Tonight was this note, new lot line. Correct, Paul?
Correct.
So this is the plan, but your requirement, and and I thank Aaron. Uh, because it is not Aaron's fault, because the one that we. Uh, submitted a week ago did not have this note, new lot line, it just had the old lot line. And then obviously, this was the new lot lot line that got moved over. And Eric pointed that out to me today of that deficiency, and that's why Paul corrected that today, and it was sent in today.
Okay.
But as I said, this is a pretty straightforward A and R plan, because what's the only thing that's happening here is. Mrs. Di Maria is giving a little piece of her property, this sliver, that now goes with the um. Surriello property. And makes it a legal lot, because it gives it the frontage it needs, and it gives it the area, and her lot. Maintains the frontage in area requirement of over twelve thousand, so it's a, it's a shift of a lot line um. That's happening here. And you know, my experience doing these, you don't want to create, you don't want to call this lot. B one and say it goes with this, because that just creates confusion in the title. And it it creates problems when people draft deeds incorrectly, when they go to sell the properties, they forget to include it. And ten years from now, somebody has a major title problem. This is the right way to do an A and R plan from a conveyancing perspective, real simple. You got lot A, you got lot B, that's it at the end of the day.
Got it, alright.
It is a very straightforward plan after reviewing it.
Yep, agreed.
So. Alright, the shed will be relocated, so um. So that's, that's noted. Bill and Jim, um. Any comments um?
My my only comment is that I I I believe, just for the purposes of clarity. And to conform with the rules and regulations that prior to the formal endorsement of this. That the following note should be added to the plans, it just says, the purpose of this plan is to transfer a portion of lot B into lot A. Via shift in the lot lines, demising the properties. Other than that, I I agree, I think this is very straightforward, and I thought the documentation seemed to meet all the other required rules and regulations.
Right.
Jim, can I make a comment on that? I, with all due respect, I think that might confuse things, because. Lot A and lot B are the resulting lots, so neither one of those is shifting anything.
The. There was a transfer of, transfer of land from the existing lot. Oh, you're saying from lot two?
Yeah, so lot lot A and lot B are the are the final resulting lots, so that, you know, neither one of the, so, so lot, you know, um. You know, I think to make that note is going to cause confusion.
Yeah, you're not really creating a new lot, you're just.
That's right, you're shipping.
Decreasing and increasing one.
And that's why you're showing the new lot line.
So how how would you write it um?
I respectfully don't think you need to, I think it's, it speaks for itself. You have lot B, one hundred and three point seven five feet of frontage, you have an old lot line, you have a new lot line, that's what's happening with the A and R plan.
So it's not a transfer of land? It is.
Correct.
Uh.
So what will happen is, so, you know, it, it, well, what will happen is, it, it, when, when this lot. When, when, it, there will be a transfer of land and this, this. The Maria, when the plan is recorded. Um, and, and everything is done with the transaction between the parties, she will convey all her right title and interest in lot B. Which gets that strip of land.
Right. So, but that, that's what the note should say.
The note could, the note should say that lot A and lot B, uh, shall constitute separate buildable lots, that, if you want to put that note, that makes sense, I guess.
All right. Um.
The, you know, the other way you can do this is, and it doesn't make sense to me, but the other way you could do it is you could make that strip. Give it a lot number. Now, B one. And say, you know, B one is to combine with lot B, you know, not a separate lot, but to be combined with lot B, you know, similar to what was done with.
Does, does this, does this address the question, um? So revising it, the purpose of this plan is to transfer a portion of former lot two into former lot one via shift in the lot line. Demising the properties. New lot A and new lot B shall constitute buildable lots.
Were those the old lot numbers, Paul?
Um, I can't get on the plans too, too now, but they say formerly lot, formerly lot.
Oh.
Formerly lot two and formerly lot one.
Right.
Jim, could you read that again, if you mind, it sounded pretty good.
Yeah, the purpose of this plan is to transfer a portion of former lot two. Into former lot one via a shift in the lot line. Demising the properties. New lot A and new lot B shall constitute buildable lots.
I think that sounds fine.
Yeah, I would agree, thank you, Jim.
I think it's, I think it's well done. Yeah.
Um. All right, um. Kevin and Matt, um, do you have any, uh, comments, um? Questions?
They didn't make sense with Jim's note added.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right.
So, in that case, Mr. Share, if I may, um. Motion to endorse the forty Curtis Street A and R. And grant. Uh, and with the following updates to the plans prior to the endorsement. The addition of the following note, the purpose of this plan is to transfer a portion of former lot two. Into former lot one via a shift in the lot line, demising the, the properties. New lot A and new lot B shall constitute buildable lots.
Terrific, um, is there a second?
Okay.
All right, thank you, Kevin, um. Um, all in favor? Bill?
Yes.
Uh, Matt?
I'm staying.
All right, thank you, all right, Kevin?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, um. Uh. The, the A and R is approved and Matt, um, I appreciate the. The, uh. The extension, um.
Mr. Chair, just want to make sure you use endorsed.
Endorse, sorry, I keep, I, I even wrote endorse down, but I keep saying approve.
That's all right, it took me like four years to figure, to.
All right, endorse, 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 all right, um. Thank you all very, very much. Um.
Thank you, thank you for your patience, thank you for considering this, um. And, uh, I can. Honestly say, when I'm involved, this will never happen again, so apologies for, uh, all the confusion and, um. And, uh, issues that arose here.
Thank you, board members, thank you, Brian.
Uh, thank you all, um, I appreciate it, um.
And Jim, could you send me that, could you email me that language, Jim, when you get a chance?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think you want to email, um. Uh, Aaron and myself too.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And, and if I could, Mr. Chair, with Aaron here now, Aaron, I had spoken to the chair that I'm going to get in touch with you about getting him to sign the, um, application so I can file those with the town clerk on all these.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you as well, all right.
The, if I could just say something, um, sure. It's eight thirty seven right now.
Yeah.
There's no reason. That this. These three. Relatively simple. Affordable, not required plans should have taken this long. And. The. Rules and regulations were written. In order to speed things along and make things easier, and yet somehow. Um, we have three plans that are. Still incomplete, that we still need to spend more time reviewing once we have. You know, once we get them. Uh, we, we need to find a way to make sure that this, this never happens again, we cannot. We can't be doing this. This is completely frustrating, if, if we had this. If we're in a live meeting. This would have taken ten minutes.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
We would have come in and said, go away, come back when it's done. So. This, I, and. I'm really kind of pissed off that we spent this much time on something this simple. Because, um. Some. Some rules and regulations could not be followed.
Well, um, I, I appreciate that and, uh. Uh, I apologize to you and the board for, uh. Not, not being a, a, as good a. A chaperone of the process, um, to use your time, uh, as effectively as possible as well. So, um. And, um, fair, fair. Fair point taken, we don't want, uh, this stuff to. Uh. Yeah, deplete, deplete us and, uh, and. Take more time than, than, um. Than is required. For sure. And yet, your, your point is very well taken.
Well, as I said, Mr. Chair, the deficiencies fall on us, we apologize, and, uh, if I'm, next day in our plane, I'm involved, this won't happen again, so.
Uh.
Well, thank you and, and apologies.
All right, um. Uh, yeah, uh, we. Uh, appreciate the apology and appreciate the, the endurance of the, of the rest of the board. Um, we'll make sure this doesn't happen again, um, on our side as well. So, um. Um. There are, uh. A couple other updates to, to get to, um. I think, um. Let's, uh, let's use our time wisely, um, and we're going to take item seven. Which is the, the three A, uh, update. Uh, from Jim and Aaron. Um.
Okay, um. As it relates to three A, so while Share is, this is the. The. Working group. Our last meeting, uh, accepted the. Map that is shown with some, I'll call it diminutive changes as it relates to some of the setbacks. Um, Matt had some good feedback as it relates to how to make. The offsets that are being shown currently from the right of way on the plan that's being presented. Off of the edge of the right of way in order to make it more practical from a. Surveying perspective. So we're getting some of those. Relatively minor adjustments made right now with our GS department, but the map you're seeing on the screen right now. Is the map that's. Planned or, or contemplated to be presented to this board. Town Council. Et cetera, et cetera, uh, in the, in the near term, we're working on the finalization of a communication strategy, the. Working group went through a draft presentation to start. Communicating to the public and other relevant boards. The process and some of the history associated with this, as well as the details of this. Map. That we're proposing, so I anticipate. The working group, in, our next meeting. Is next week, uh, October third. And so the intent is at that October third meeting that. This, that presentation finalized and that we would, uh, vote to start the public engagement process. In addition, more advisory nature for this group, uh. Aaron and I have been working and. We have secured, uh, time with town council to provide them an update on October sixteenth. So I anticipate that. Between now and October sixteenth at our next meeting, currently scheduled on October tenth. That I would be able to present. The results of the working group. Group's work and. Uh, provide this board an update, provide town council an update on the sixteenth, and then kick off the public engagement process in earnest.
Terrific. Um, do you want to talk about the, um? The public engagement process?
Or? Thinking of. Yep, so we're working on, working on defining the public engagement process more fully, however, uh, in, I've. Been in contact with Aaron and CEO related to. Trying to get public forums, uh, in a planning board settings on the books, uh, approximately once a month, starting in October through the end of this year. And with the thought process that we would also be engaging with. The zoning board appeals, getting on their. Agenda as well as the environmental sustainability committee on their agenda. And I think based on the feedback we receive from planning board, town council. And some of those, you know, CBA, environmental sustainability, uh, I think we're still trying to find what are the other groups that are going to be going and proactively trying to present. Uh, that presentation that's currently in the works too. Uh, the intent is to slow as much feedback as possible between now and the end of the year and provide us a little bit of time. In January and February to make any required adjustments to the map plan that you're, that's being presented right now. Concurrently and separately, the working group is now taking up more, in more in earnest, the development of the. Bylaw itself. The actual. Proposed language that would constitute the bylaw, we did get some feedback from the environmental, sorry, from the bylaw review committee. Um, and some guidance as early to how to structure some of the bylaws, so we're taking that feedback and incorporating it. Uh, I did, uh, we're aiming for that to be. That drafts to be collated. Approximately Thanksgiving to be somewhere in December, somewhere in that timeframe, in order to allow the bylaw review committee time in January and February to complete their review. And make any suggested edits. And all that timeline was reviewed with Chairperson Lieber.
Yeah, oh, good, okay. Terrific, um. No, I'm. Yeah, I'm. Uh, really impressed by, uh, the work of the working group, um, and so, uh. You know, much appreciated to, to you and Matt and Aaron and, uh, and everyone involved, um, and, um. This is where we, we want to be spending, uh, the lion's share of our, our time and energy. Um. To think this through and, uh, and to do the engagement process, um, for sure, um. Yeah, so the. Um, your plan has been, um. Uh, hold, um, public forums, not public hearings, um. The second, um, October twenty fourth, November fourteenth, and December twelfth, um. Um, and I think that. That's really terrific, um. So, um, we'll definitely put those on the agenda and we want to do sort of, since it's not a public hearing, um, but. At the same time, we do want to. Do the marketing that we, that we need to. Uh, to encourage participation in the, in these events. Um. Any thoughts about that? Um, you know. Other than the ubiquitous letters to the item, um.
I think letters to the item, I think that I would, um. Will probably rely on. Any other suggestions other folks have, uh, I think we're in the process of starting, to be honest, we're trying to get to the point where we have something to present. But that's a point well taken that we need to start thinking about that more thoughtfully.
Yeah.
Yeah, I said it would be probably good to bring in Jen McDonald because she knows all the players of who we should be reaching out to, um, to make sure that we cover all our bases, so. And I'm sorry on my camera, I can't figure out for the life of me why it's not working.
Right, no, quite.
The person behind the curtain.
Yeah, right. Um. The, I mean. Uh. Yeah, certainly the, the. Um, the master plan advisory group and, um. And a, a number of other, uh. Uh, a number of other committees, would you envision, um? Like in terms of the, these actual, uh. Public forums. Inviting other. Town members to speak about it. Um, or representatives of various. Uh, sort of groups or whatnot, I mean.
I think that would be the primary, I think that would be the primary goal, is similar to what we did when we, prior to the establishment of the working group, and we were, um. We had held a number of those A's and Q sessions.
Yeah.
It would be to have a presentation where we walk through. Why are we doing this? Some of the history, uh, associated with the state. Mandate and the requirements that. They dictated. How we built, how we. Came together with the process that we have been going down the path of. What are the results of the, you know, how do we get to the map that we're proposing? And what are some of the key features of it? And then after that, open the. The conversation to whoever. We can. Get to attend these meetings in order to solicit their feedback. And then based on that level of feedback, we'll review as a group and figure out if there's any, uh, additional changes to the maps that we think would be appropriate prior to. Finalizing. Q one, Q two of next year. In advance of the. Springtown meeting.
Okay, great. Um.
At this time, the thought process of, of working towards Springtown meeting vote is still. Still the baseline that we're working towards.
Yeah.
And I, I think the hard part is really going to come up once he, he gets us out to the public because. Everyone's going to question everything that you did. And you want to know. Why we did it certain way. And every meeting you're going to have some of those people that are going to. You know. Bring up these, the same thing that we wanted to create some of these, so.
Yeah.
The, the key is to get as many people. Who are potentially going to be town meeting members, show up. To ask these questions before our meeting because. A lot of people ask these questions knowing that they can't be resolved at the last moment. And it has justification to shoot something down. So. Um, I think we need to be real clear as to exactly, Jim and I can, can point out why. We. Believe that this is the best. The best thing for the town, we actually, this, we would like to go further, but. We have, we're just pretty realistic that. There's going to be a strong. Percentage of people that want to do the bare minimum. And, and just do whatever they need to do if they even want to do that. Most people are just going to say no, just because that's their default.
Right, right.
And to, just to follow up on that from. The conversation that I shared. Last, at our last meeting, what Arlington, um, just went through. And it, like, setting a time limit. Um, setting up people to speak, how much time they have to speak. I think all that stuff might really help move it along, so more people do get a chance. And then after that goes through, if we do say, well, each, you have two minutes, or whatever it might be.
Yeah.
Um. Then after everybody has a chance to talk, then people who didn't speak can speak again, and it's, it's, it's just standard, but. I think if we do set up some of those, um, constraints, it will help move the meeting along. Um. Yeah. I, I. And not to keep pushing it, but I really wish we could do this in person and have. Zoom as well, like hybrid. Um, and I know that's something that, um. Sherry did get back to me, Sherry Dalton, and the. Remote meetings were extended, um. Until March thirty first of twenty twenty five. If I read her email correctly, um. But. Sherry said that, um. We're. Far ahead of that with setting up in town hall, and let's see, town, let's see, once we're here in town equipment. For hybrid meetings, um. She will be contacting the chairs of each committee and board to let them know. But she feels that. Um. Will be. Having hybrid meetings before that time.
Knock on wood.
Yeah.
Um. Uh.
Well. Well, there, being, a, any space on the town website that can kind of prep people for these meetings, sort of give background. Information, set expectations before them to kind of streamline the process?
Um, yeah, well, we do have a website set up already for MBTA communities, but that does bring a good point, we talked about this at our. Last MBTA communities meeting about kind of what this story is we're telling. And, um, we talked about this at this meeting as well last time, but it might be helpful to do like, kind of like an FAQ of. You know, why you need these housing, kind of. Demystify some of the, the things that you'll hear often, well, you talked about this, like schools, infrastructure, um, what was another one? Um, we did a housing forum back in twenty twenty one, and they had like a list of like the main things that people always bring up, and then there's. Actual data and facts to support. You know, that, that doesn't affect, so maybe. actual data and facts to support, you know, that, that doesn't affect. So maybe there might be a way on top of our presentation, we're gonna include some of that, but have some of that initial questions and answers prior to these meetings. Um, just an idea.
A really good idea.
And I don't know if, um, this is what Kevin was, um, working towards, but, um, currently when we set up, um, websites for different projects. A lot of what we do is when we present, whether it's the public or internally or to our clients. We'll actually use the website to do the presentation right from there. We'll start with being on the town's website, for example, and point out that information. That way people can go back to it easier and all the information that is being presented is also up there on the site. As well as different links, like the current one that has links to the state stuff and other, um, examples, but, um, I always find that's a, a a better way to present, especially if people are watching the recording or people are buzzing through it while they're in the meeting and looking at it in a different, um, webpage. Um, I don't know if that's something Jim that came up where if there is a site, like the one we have on the town web, um, page where it could have, um, like really follow what the presentation is gonna be to the public.
So I think that most of the information is already on the, that website that Aaron referenced. I'm taking a look at it right now and I think that I'm gonna reach out to Jen McDonald. It looks like we, there's a couple of meetings that have happened since the last update. So I'm gonna try to make sure we get that updated. And I think that you bring up a good point as it relates to how, showing how to get to that information. Um, you know, we, we have a lot of the presentations and the meeting minutes and the videos. And, you know, all of that information is all in one spot. So I think it's, I think all the information is there. You know, with the exception of a couple of things that we need to make sure we get updated, but to your point, just because it's there, doesn't necessarily mean that people are, um. Are accessing it in a manner such that, you know, it'll help facilitate their, them being able to keep up.
Well, it's, it's, uh, the first question as we know, and Aaron mentioned, oh, what are the first questions we have? We didn't know about this. How do we find out about this is usually the first thing. How come we didn't know about this earlier? Well, it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I a hundred percent understand that.
Yeah.
A lot of this information's been up there for a very long time. So we're, we're trying to figure out the best way to address that. I do know that the, um, we've done some outreach in the past regarding Q and A sessions. A cult mixed success. Uh, so I think we'll probably, to Aaron's point, kind of liaising with Jen is probably the best way to try to get that.
Right.
Tips, tips on how to
Yeah.
Get it out farther.
Exactly. I think Jen is the right person and the maps, the visual side of it helps so much. I think that's critical, obviously, to to nail, nail it with the visuals, with the maps and the, the quicker you can get through the, um, introduction, explanation, rules and whatever's going on with the state and then quickly go to the visuals. Um, yeah, that's. I don't know. How long do you think the presentation, Jim, would be, will be, um, before we go and before we listen to the public? What are you thinking?
It's a loaded question. It's something that we're trying to figure out. Uh, when Aaron and I, Aaron and I, so we corresponded back and forth, came up with a draft, we reviewed it with, with the working group. Since then, Aaron and I went back again, we tried to pare it down and we got it down to like twenty slides. The, a handful, yeah, a handful. And then with a large number of appendices.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so we have, for example, in the appendix, we have a slide talking about school enrollment. Cause we anticipate it's gonna be one of the first questions, but we don't want to necessarily bury everyone with a, you know, a two hour presentation that's not gonna facilitate the conversation. So we're trying to get, we're trying to strike that balance. Um, so we're in the process of updating that presentation. I anticipate that at the next working group meeting, you know, a week from today, that we'll review the revised presentation. My hope and prayer is that we'll get to a point where that gets approved by the balance of the working group. So, um. But that, that's kind of, the intent is to try to have a bunch of information, go through it. At, I don't wanna say at pace, but go through it, you know, so we're not having a, uh, an hour long presentation. You know, my hope is to try to keep it down to something more modest, you know, twenty minutes or so. And then, you know, be able to fall back and utilize the balance of the base presentation as well as the appendices to facilitate the conversations. Cause my guess is that what we're gonna, you know, the first question's gonna be schools. The next one's probably gonna be estimated housing production. So we're trying to be proactive and include some of that, that information.
Yeah, I think, and then this is a challenge for all of us in any field that's presenting something, whether it's to a client or to a community and the dry runs are so critical. So obviously you've probably thought about that too, doing some dry runs and please sign me up if you want an audience while you're doing a dry run just for some feedback. Where, um, it, yeah, if you can cut that twenty minutes, which you've already done down to like fifteen minutes, where what's worked for us, um, in my office where we have so much information and it's, it's like a stack of paragraphs with visuals. We shrink it down to just four or five specific sentences and a couple of questions. But then at the very end of that small little paragraph, we like to have want to know more? Question mark. And that would be a link to more in-depth information like the white paper or the maps or the visuals that will take it further. And of course, the presenter, you and, and the, and the committee will know exactly which data or which visualization to go to, to help answer a question that somebody has. I know that's, that's helped us and it, it's, it's such a, um. It's such a long process to make it simple. So again, if you, um, if there's anything that I can help with, whether it's just listening or reviewing, let me know.
Yeah, I think what I'll probably end up doing is when we get, when we get the map, or sorry, when we get the presentation ready.
Mm-hmm.
When we just, we're gonna distribute it to the working group. My guess is that I'll probably distribute it to the planning board as well as a, I'll call it a draft. Um, just so, you know, the members of this board can get ahead of that review process. And then when the, the final map, when the final presentation is finalized with the working group, I'll push it to the balance of this group. So you guys have a heads up and then I'm also gonna work, try to get it updated onto the website as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to be a sounding board too. And I agree with everything Bill said. I, I think it to distill everything into that baseline presentation, which I would almost think of as a storyboard more than a presentation, given the storytelling aspect we've all talked about and refer people on their own to go dig deeper if they want to, but give them what they need to know, what, what they, what you hope to convey to them and then kind of make it on them to go look at everything that's already out there.
That's really helpful.
Yeah, I like that.
I would kind of lean towards a, a quick, you know, a quick outline and get right to the question because once people start, once a few people ask a question, you begin to tie in more information and they answer. I think we'll pay a little bit more attention a little bit more detail because you're, you're directly answering somebody.
Right.
And Bill's point, um, the more people that, that say, oh, I did not know about this, these early meetings are fewer that will do it at town meetings. More than looking for people who are educated, wanting to get.
Would it, uh, um, would it help to try to cover some topics uh sequentially? So like the first meeting could be a little more basic and the second meeting would be. You know, so first meeting would be basic in schools. The second meeting would be more like housing production. I don't know, like, is there ways of breaking it out or, um. You know, finding some.
Honestly, I think we looked at Lexington's presentation that they did at town meeting and it's, I thought this Jim, and maybe you didn't feel this way, I thought it was basic enough. Um, where it hits the important parts, but doesn't go into, of course, like if people want, like someone said, if they want to do more digging, they can. I think we've covered a lot of that already. Um, I think we kind of need to just, again, kind of tell the story of what this district in a, in a good way without going into the weeds. Um.
If, uh, if other members of the board are interested and feel free to tell me if you, you, I have the presentation, again, not fully baked. But if you guys wanna kind of see the outline of what we're thinking, I can show you. I know where we are. And, you know, as I said, this is in the process of being edited, but if you guys are so interested, it sounds like you guys have a interest in getting into the weeds of how we're storyboarding this. Again, this is not even presented to the working group yet.
Sorry, I, sorry to interrupt. I don't, I don't want to be part of the committee. I just, I wanna be there, like if you're doing a dry run to give you feedback. To look at what you are gonna present to give you some feedback, but I don't need to be part of constructing it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just more about like, what you guys are doing is great. It's great. And I think pulling Jen McDonald in, awesome. And then i- if, if, when you are at that point where it's like, oh, we're presenting all this. That would be the time where I would love to be, um, as Kevin mentioned it, like a sounding board.
And to, to Theo's point, I think we, we need to treat this as people don't show up at one of these presentations and that's it. I don't think they're gonna wanna come back multiple times.
Fair enough.
Uh, and, and this just goes to how the, the ZBA, you know, this thing is, and you know, someone asked a question and you said, oh, we discussed that. And I was meeting, you know, I kind of go over there again. That's not helpful and if people don't like that. So I think
Yeah, fair enough.
We need to be prepared to answer the exact same question three or four times, even at town meeting. Need to be consistent. How we answer it and, you know, just, you know, straight out answer the question and we move on because I know a lot of these are gonna get over and over again. We can't, you know, we can't get frustrated. So we've already answered that twenty five times. Not gonna answer it twenty six times. That's, you know, we're, we're trying to convince that almost on one, one-on-one, that person of why this is a good idea. If the next person has to ask the exact same thing, then you kind of have to answer.
Yeah, got it. No. Uh, that makes, makes such good sense. All right. Okay. Well, um, we'll, um, we'll reserve whatever time you think you need, um, uh, at, at our, you know, at all of our meetings as, as we move forward. So, um, but yeah, no. Much appreciated. So, um, the, maybe the, the only other item to make agenda wise is we were going to talk, uh, with town council on the sixteenth uh, about the master plan, but instead you're presenting to the, the town council. Um, and, um. We'll, we'll try to, try to attend as, as possible, um, to that meeting as well. So, but that's not going to be a joint meeting of town council and planning board.
No.
As I, as I understand, okay. All right. Um, so, yeah, I think, I think we've said it, uh, a number of times, but we really are, uh, grateful, um, Jim, Matt and Aaron for all, all of your, all of your work. So, um, really thoughtful and, um, valued leadership. So thank you. Um. Aaron, do you want to give a quick master plan update?
Yeah, I'll be super quick. So, um, to be mindful of people's time. Um, so we received the master plan, um, about two weeks ago at this point, uh, did an internal review with our advisory group that you guys appointed. Um, to be completely transparent, I don't remember last time what I talked about with you guys, but it did not live up to the expectation that we were hoping for. Um, we feel the plan still needs a lot of work. So Steve, myself and Jen had a meeting with MAPC last, um, last week and discussed, um, what we, we talked about at our AG meeting. And, um, MAPC says if the improvements that we'd like to see need to be done, they'll need more time. We have to amend our contract. So right now I'm kind of at a standstill, um, waiting for them, but I am still reviewing the document and pulling out goals. Um, I think something to note too that um, I think he included a lot of data in the document because people have been coming forward saying that's MAPC's, you know, voice and, um. And if you do look at the data, a lot of the recommendations, so do go hand in hand with what the survey results were. So, um, something to keep in mind when you read the document. Um, but I will be looking through that over the course. I just need to get through town day, but get through the course of, uh, the next few weeks and, um, I'll have a better update for you the next time.
Yeah, yeah. Um, thank you very much. Um, any, any questions about the master plan? Yeah, um. Also appreciate your perseverance and your leadership, uh, uh, with the master plan. Um, Kevin, any quick updates on the bylaw review?
The zoning bylaw reviews are on hold right now. Um, it was realized that another partner at attorney Bobrowski's firm is working on a project with the town of Wakefield, which presents a conflict of interest within his uh, and they are working to resolve that at the moment. Uh, we've been told we should not expect to review any zoning bylaws for the next few meetings as they kind of work that out.
Okay. All right. Uh, that's a big update. Thank you very much. Um. All right. Um, I will, uh, skip over, uh, agenda topics. I think, um, we, we know what, what we're doing. Um. The, uh, um, uh, I will, uh, um, town day is October seventh. Um, there's a Wakefield one-on-one on November second um, at the Americal, um, and, uh, so, um. I can update folks with, with our planning about, uh, about those a- as we go forward. So, um. Uh, does it, um, to that, to that point, does anybody have other agenda topics that, that you want to put on the horizon? Um.
No agenda topics, but I'm sorry, we're doing, were we under
Yeah, yeah, we're
not anticipated?
Yeah, we're sliding into number ten.
All right. Um, only because I didn't add Sherry's message also, she did mention, and I want to make sure it's clear that the town has not received any complaints that people cannot join meetings because of computer or internet access. And she reiterated that she does take every meeting recording of our Zoom accounts and publish them. So it is out there and I still do feel that we, um, hybrid meetings are the way to go to be in person for all of us and to have people attend. Uh, I just wanted to clarify that. And, um, a couple of other things that I was following up with. Our state's Safe Streets event did not happen because of the weather. Unfortunately, that was canceled as well as a fundraiser event for a local, um, um, schoolgirl that, um, is fighting cancer. We also, um, a couple of things that's going on, the Safe Streets, we're meeting tomorrow night and we will be presenting in front of town council at the October second meeting for the bike pad plan. So there's a lot going on. If anybody has anything else they want to discuss with me about that, please let me know. Um. Lastly, and if you didn't see in the item or didn't get the message from the town, which is really well pushed out, um, for the Northeast Metro Tech, there's a meeting, I believe Thursday evening at seven for the blasting plan. I just thought our board, if they're not aware of that, it's good to know.
Thank you very much for bringing that up. That's, um, that's important. Um. Other board members, items not anticipated? Um. So, yeah, Jim.
Um, one question for, and maybe this is, um, if you bear with me for a second, Chairman. Um, I know that I received this approval, not required checklist to go through submittals, and this is what I use when I'm conducting my review. I just popped onto our website based on what Attorney McGrail was mentioning, a- and maybe this is a part of the process that may be helpful. But I noticed that this checklist, which I find exceptionally helpful, is not on our website. Uh, the form A is on there as well as the additional information really guarding, um, you know, subdivision land checklist and such. You know, if you bear with me for a second, I'll share my screen again.
Yeah.
But I question whether or not the board, can you guys see the website?
Yeah.
That's up here. I question whether or not that checklist that I pulled up previously, the A and R one, may wanna live somewhere on this website because I personally find it very helpful and, and hopefully it would make it so it'd be easier for the engineers to, and surveyors to put together plans. So we're to To and surveyors to put together plans, so we're to chairperson Larry Larry's uh. Earlier comment, we're not spending nearly as much time talking about plans that don't necessarily fill all the different elements.
Jim and um, yeah, I appreciate the comment. I would suggest one step further that we have a link to the codes. Instead of having them up there in a different format, because if something changes, it's gonna change in the codes and then we'll have. Um, conflicting documents, one on our webpage that maybe won't get updated. But if we have a link that goes right to section three twenty dash four two, then I I think that's maybe a. A better way to approach it.
And a follow-up email I did send to the Attorney McGirl, I did ask them to review three twenty four um to make sure that they were following, and I've. Done that before with some other attorneys as for a few other A and R plans, so I don't know where the confusion lies with that.
And it's the same engineers, it's not like this engineers either, so, okay, sorry for, I know I got.
No, I just was letting you know that. I tried to direct them. You go to that, um.
Right.
Checklist is is something that I put together and then I sent out to people. Always ideas I have, you know, all of it too, what we had. What you guys know, so the whether our. Rules and regulations is a checklist actually, which is, I think, what. By the ground getting to that, it's not a check, this is not a place we could actually put a check. This is. In reality, it's all you need to do is to just follow along and answer each box. Whether it comes by the box, so we could put that on there. I have a problem with that, but it literally just. Line item.
Yeah. The uh, yeah, um, I I think adding a link to the to the codes is um. Uh, really good, um, I think the. Um, and yeah, um, and again, uh my apologies to the board for not. Managing these um uh more effectively, so.
Uh, again.
Yeah.
Theo and Aaron, there are professionals that are putting these plans together that are getting. Do it.
Right.
You shouldn't have to. You know, go line item, whether they have, they should be able to do this, submit something.
Agreed.
It it should be incumbent on on you guys to have to follow up and for us to literally. As we did tonight, write their notes for them.
Um, I appreciate that as well, so thank you.
But again, from Bill and I who were in. Actual meetings, I guess you call them. Um, nowadays. Things were, if if people didn't have their plan together. Beforehand, we just said, go away, fix it and come back. There was no revising, we'll we'll get it later. Send it over to me whenever you have it, you know, emailed. Either do it that meeting or the next meeting. If you didn't have it ready at that meeting, that meant they wait till the next meeting. They didn't have it ready then, they'd wait again, so. We're, we are indulging people a little bit too much by being able to review things. Um, and then let them. We submit. You submit the materials later.
Yeah. That's a. Really good guidance, I, so.
You know, those means were tough, because I would look at the landowners or the clients and and I'd be like, what do you say? Sorry, you know? You're paying for this service and you're you're wasting your own time and money, so it's, yeah, I think to Matt's point too. I think as a board, we're we're trying to make it easier for people who are trying to. Um, get A and Rs endorsed or subdivisions or whatever it might be, and it's, I'm not sure how much easier we can make it, so. Yeah.
All right. Uh, good advice and a good good perspective, so much appreciated, so. Um, we've got a lot of notes uh in our agenda, um and uh. The, so a lot of good stuff happening, so um. Uh, if there aren't any other uh items not anticipated, um. Uh, happy to take a motion to adjourn, so, and again, appreciate everybody's uh time and attention to the the big. Picture items in the minutia that that we've gotta uh work through.
Thanks, Theo. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, second.
On second.
All right, thank you, Matt. Uh, all in favor, Kevin?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And and myself, yes.